Wyatt.
Here.
Sewell.
Here.
Reister. Cook.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
And Heather is on Zoom.
Okay.
Hello.
All right, looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry? Consent agenda? Does anybody have any questions or? Want to talk about anything? All right, then I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Right, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry? Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. We'll move into citizens' requests and oral presentations. Do we have anybody here that wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Everything?
I think they're all happy with this.
Okay. All right. We'll move into committee reports and recommendations. Personnel admin committee meeting from March 25th. What we have to do? So maybe it was called order of approval by on March 25th. First time my business was updating the employee residency requirements for the police department. The current policy states they have to be able to respond within 20 minutes. And Officer Yuzma would like to change that policy to 30 minutes because of period trends and the help of the food. And so the committee approved it or recommended to approve to the city council. But we leave that on tonight's agenda, right?
The residency, yeah, yep.
And so I'm voting very forward. The final item was moving a part-time police officer to full-time. So Officer Roberts involved with the police department here in Hudson. The intent is to move a part-time officer, Officer Paul, to full-time. And the position, has it already been posted for 10 days or is that?
Yes, nope, it was, it was posted.
Okay, so it was posted for 10 days to comply with veterans' preference. And the position that's vacated by moving our part-time to full-time will be filled eventually, but not immediately. So we recommend it also as the committee board of nothing to make that, make that recommendation. Maybe you've enjoyed it. Any questions for Lori? Okay, we'll move into public hearings. First, public hearing. Public hearing to amend the Hudson City Code 2017, Chapter 106, Solid Waste Control, Section 106.08, amending the following language collection fees. Oh, any written comments or anything, Chrissy?
No.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Second, public hearing for the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Any written?
No.
Or, okay? Any other comments? Okay, we will close that public hearing. Public hearing, three, public hearing to approve the request of Gerald Mayfield for approval of the Mayfield minor plat number one. Any? Comments?
No.
Any other comments? We will close that public hearing. We will move into general government. The Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive first and second readings of the ordinance presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance with the same council, within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action, and this will be for the first reading of ordinance 902, an ordinance to amend the Hudson City Code 2017, Chapter 106, Collection of Solid Waste, amending the following language collection fees. And this then will change it from the current rate of $14 to 15.25 a month beginning July 1st. Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Wyatt. Sewell.
Hi.
Reister. Cook. Lawson. All right, motion carries five, zero.
Item B, discussion action to approve resolution 3198, a resolution adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. The motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Reister. Lawson. Cook. Sewell.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
All right, motion carries five, zero.
Item C, discussion action to approve resolution 3199, a resolution for approval of minor plat number one to Gerald Mayfield. And this is before the addition of two additional lots on the property on Eldora Road. Any discussion?
Yes, correct.
Yep, and we will not, I mean, the driveways will come off of Fair Oaks, but we are not extending Fair Oaks. They'll just provide access to.
Yep, that, that was my only question, thank you, Chrissy. So did they include easements for private drives and is that what they're doing?
Yes, they will.
Perfect, all right, I just wanted to make sure, sure we did, otherwise we'd have road issues, so awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
All right, Wyatt. Reister. Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson. Cook.
All right.
All right, motion carries five, zero.
Item D, discussion action to approve resolution 3200, a resolution for approval to provide a donation to Hudson Days. Last year we gave 4,000. And so the committee here. Okay.
Second.
Discussion now?
So what is the amount we're looking at?
So they, the Hudson Days Committee has requested 6,000, and last year we gave 4,000.
Right. And they had originally requested 6,000 last year, too.
Correct.
And I think we, I mean, this is going back a ways, but it started with 1,000. These tables are reversed, it's whacking the mouth.
Sorry.
And then I think we ended on 2,500 for a while, and there may be a 35 dollar.
Yep. Yep, last year was the first time that we upped it from 35 to 4,000.
And I'm always kind of the stick in the mud, and I feel bad about, are you guys from the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, well, just to clarify my position, I am for Hudson Days. And I'm for the city supporting it to a degree. We do give a lot of support with police time and Jake's time.
Correct.
And. I view my role, and I think we all do, as kind of guardians of the taxpayer here. And so I kind of vacillate between giving money to Hudson Days from the city, which I think there's a value for that to a degree, which is why I've supported it in the past. And not committing every taxpayer to more and more dollars to Hudson Days, because if people want to give to it, they can do that, as I understand, through fundraising and clothes. And so if somebody's really, really into Hudson Days beyond what we commit of their tax dollars, they're free to give it. And so I'm always kind of the guy who's like, okay, where's the line? What is, because there is, I think it's unquestionably there's a benefit to the city of life. Which is why I've never voted no. At the same time, and inflation I get and all that.
Like we're bringing this year's rollbacks with that, that we're gonna see any length in our budget?
So last year, they asked for five last year, we gave four. We challenged the committee to raise that additional thousand. If not, come back to us, is that correct? Do you remember that conversation?
Did they ask, did you ask?
I think last year was six.
Was it six?
Yeah. Yep.
And we challenged the committee to come back if they didn't get it raised. I don't know if they ever got it raised, I, I never heard.
From the notes in your, in the submission, it said that you guys came out in the black, correct? By not much, but some.
We, I mean, based on our end, we, we have a starting.
We're pretty.
Pretty informal.
Yeah, we, we joined the committee for the 2021 event with, that was. We had a negative that year pretty substantially. We didn't react at that time, so I mean, we really had a lot of control over expenses. We're able to make it because the event was canceled in 2020, so we had a lot of stuff taken off. The 2022 events, we were negative and had a bit. Last year was the first year that we, we know and we came out ahead. So that was based on us raising additional money on our own, and then we did different things like raising wristband prices and kind of different things. But we did come out slightly ahead last year.
That's, I know, it's pretty close, but. My concern is, and I'm not on my amazing video, so thank you guys for wanting to do because I appreciate it, I know what I have to do, I don't want to be on the committee because I got too many other commitments on other stuff. But it has seemed in the past like it's always been, okay, we're gonna do all this, but we'll figure out a way to monetize, like, you know what I mean, instead of having to. To it. Which I think I was concerned with for the people that are donating when you, and you mentioned in the packet as well, you know, we do have a lot wrapped up that we donate between garbage and court bodies and time and police and everybody else that's into it. So I think we have to do it top-down as well. But again, I'm for supporting Hudson Days, I'm not gonna say. But I will go raising a $2,000 this year, so way to go when we got like the rollbacks that are occurring and we're cutting much of, not everything.
How does your projected cost compare to last year?
Yeah, it's, the projected cost is, is probably increased over, I would say, 5,000 or 10,000 for all year last year. So that really involved, like I said, we, we had, we, we came out 2,000 over the head, but the fireworks has really been making a big driver, what's set us back over the years. And some of the earthlings as well, too. The stage, I mean, the ass, the hard part, talking about like, you know, I think in order to grow the event, we barely covering these through July, I think we were all close, like in the red, and barely came out ahead. The day of the event, we made our one on the wristbands and stuff, and obviously we ended up getting 10,000 in the bank. But really going into that next year, planning it out, it's hard to plan if you don't know when you're gonna be in my next state. You don't have that starting out, so I mean, as far as our budget, the biggest, the biggest issues this year are gonna be with, like, the stage, if you have to pay for a stage, if you have an accident to that, that's one of the hurdles that we weren't expecting. I don't think this year, then, for the future, but not this year. One of the, you know, what are the other biggest hurdles? I mean, a lot of our vendor prices that went up as far as, you know, just like the inflatables and the normal stuff we do, the fireworks that have increased, I think, $4,000 in the last, like, three, four years, I think, I would say. For record, we don't buy that for probably fireworks. So I'm out of that.
You know, I think the other issue, too, is, you know, we're in a non-profit, right? We have our own hydro and stuff, and we have to pay for our own event insurance. And that is a huge chunk of money out of our budget, because, and we have to be liable for fireworks, we have to ensure the parade, we have to ensure all of that stuff. And that's not something that the organization had the support of in the past, because it was under the lines of our umbrella. And so really, in the past couple of years, is when we took on that full liability. And that, the first year it cost us over $5,000 just for insurance on the event. And if you think about that, that's a lot of money that could be spent towards, you know, entertainment or stage or what have you, that we're just having to shell out to cover the event itself and keep it running. And so I think that's another challenge that we're gonna continue to face, it's just the cost of that thing.
You want to tell us about your total budget?
Are we spending around $1,000? You have a total of $1,000.
And that, but that doesn't include all of the. In.
No, that's, yeah.
That, that's the dollar. So do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we have a motion, but the resolution is blank because I wasn't sure where the discussion was going to go.
Okay.
So, like I said, last year, I know you asked for that, we come back with four and, and challenge the committee to, to see what they could do. Not hearing back means you guys made it. And now hearing that you're in the black, you made it. Understand it went up. I guess, I, I, I don't know.
I'd make a motion that we go forward and do the same thing.
And ask if, if they come in the red, to come back and talk to us?
One, one more question, though, is there any, Chrissy or Danny or Chief, is there any? Can we put any dollar amount, ballpark dollar amount on, on the thing we end time for Hudson Days? I mean, it, it might be hard, for example, you'd already have some cops on duty, whoever was Hudson Days, they don't have to act. But there's some tax grab, or, or, or public works, the stuff Jake does.
Yeah, yeah, we could. Yeah, I think we did that either last year or the year before.
We did that the year that we had Daniel and all of them in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Join us.
Yeah, yeah, I can look and see if I can find that again, and I can update it.
I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
And I think it'd be, I mean, in some way, interesting to make that available in public, so that, so they see our commitment to that goes beyond the dollars that we commit, you know?
Being involved with other events that aren't necessarily happening, I completely understand when someone's trying to break the rules, because it's the worst call that happens. He's doing. And I have had such a hard time trying to stop the last three years. So I commend you for taking this on, despite everybody wants to do it. And on that side, I'm like, you know, we've got to have a stopping point with the city tax dollars, too. But I would also agree that if, if you do get, if it's down to the end, that we need to help bridge something, you know, we can just pop a little further about that, is that kind of a reaction?
Yeah, you know, like I said, last year, we sort of put that out there as a feeler. And like I said, nobody came back, and it's like, okay, great. Don't want you to come back, ideally.
It'd be a good thing if you don't have to.
Right, but I'd like to see if we can have some of the other, maybe businesses or local people step up and help. Definitely, like Matt said, to, to show the public what we put involved, as far as the police and, and the public works committee and everything else that we, we have helped with. I, I guess that's where I'm sort of at, is, is that 4,000 again. As, as we get closer, please come back and let us know how it's going.
So I know Matt made motion. Is there a second then, or? Sounds like there was a second. Oh, okay. And then, do we need to do it as a friendly amendment, Heather, or?
Yeah, you can, you can do that as a friendly amendment, that's fine.
So it'll be a friendly amendment to fill in the blanks on the resolution, so?
Yep.
Do we need to roll call on that one?
If it's a resolution, yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Or, so are we just, we're voting on the whole resolution and not just the 4,000?
Right, you're voting on the whole resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Correct, correct. So you got, what, did you, so was the second, was the amendment to the first motion, that was, that was the friendly amendment to the first motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, then yes, you can roll call based upon the friendly amendment to the first motion.
Okay. All right, so Reister. Lawson.
All right.
Cook.
All right.
Sewell.
Hi.
Wyatt. So motion carries five, zero.
And we'll also add all the extra, I'll bring these up, because I know the blast, I think that's pretty awesome, it's big though, and everything else, can't have gotten it, so hopefully they're not getting stolen or the fact that you're being over there, but. We'll, I don't mind off every time I get in the car. Thank you for all, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
It's a tough position, but thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but if you don't want to be gone, certainly understand. Okay.
I will be. Is that land?
Yeah.
Yep.
We would, too. I, I am the discussion action to approve resolution 3201, a resolution for approval of payment request number one regarding the City Hall Community Center update project. The project engineer has approved this payment, and it would be in the amount of $30,708.13.
So moved.
So.
Discussion?
Yeah, how's it going? Like budget-wise, are we on budget, are we?
Yes, yeah.
And?
Yeah, we are.
What's the timeline?
Uh, so, the, well, first of all, the the cost estimate from the engineer was about $150,000 less than what the engineer was expecting. And so that has helped, and yeah, they're working really well. They're here almost, I think, almost every day except for Sunday. The tentative timeline is May 8th to be done upstairs. So hopefully by the first meeting in May, we'll be back upstairs in the.
I know you should be done, because of the people that are on wall coverings.
Yeah, so what the wall coverings are is actually a, a vinyl, and so as they were tearing that vinyl part off of it, everything was coming off the drywall, all of that. So they've had to, we've had to add about $1,200 to the project cost because, because of that. But we have a $10,000 contingency, so it's just coming out of there.
When you say May 8th, you're talking about the whole thing?
Uh, upstairs.
Upstairs.
Yep, downstairs will be, that'll be under construction all summer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, any other discussion?
It will be in upstairs.
She's so excited to hear all the kids.
There's not very many of them so far. It'll be fine.
We'll call then.
Lawson.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Reister. Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Uh, motion carries five, zero.
Okay, item A, discussion action to approve resolution 3202, a resolution to amending residency requirement policy, and this is then to move the police to 30 minutes. Do I have a motion somewhere?
Second, explain it.
So they have, they have to live within a range of, like, 30 miles away to City Hall.
Got it, got it.
Is this not matching?
Was it 30 minutes or 30 miles?
30 miles.
30, 30 minutes.
30 minutes.
Okay.
Um, is this, was, was this one lower than the rest of them for some reason?
Um, at one time, it was lower, but we increased it a couple of years ago to 20 minutes. And so now we're just increasing just the police officer portion of it to 30 minutes.
But isn't the city, isn't Jake 30 minutes as well? Jake's is 20.
Jake's is 20.
Public Works Director, and the rest of Public Works is 30. No, Fire.
Fire District.
Fire District. Yep, which is different because we go out.
No, they didn't.
Very far, so.
I mean, a perfect scenario, we want them to move to town. That's for sure.
Right now, once you live in town, it's, me, where's my mall?
He is so excited about that?
Mall's excited about there. Affecting songs related to the way that my mansion.
Oh, a lot.
So. Yeah, we said it was right outside. Austin, Super Ainsboro. Furthest one right now is, that's full-time is. Eaters. Eaters.
Is that 30 minutes?
Yeah, it's like, it's like 31 minutes.
Right.
Yeah.
So Officer Paul.
Good fingers on a squeaker all the way.
Is it 30 legal minutes or 30 minutes?
Yeah.
Matt, we might be able to get some of that revenue back, you know?
And Officer Paul, then we'll be.
People that needs to be moving with the residents to do for the full time to.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
All right, ready for roll call? Yeah, okay. Sewell.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Cook.
All right.
All right, motion carries five, zero.
Item G, discussion action to approve resolution 3204, a resolution setting public hearing regarding annexation, and that's the favorite one. No.
Oh, that's, that's a mistake.
That's the bull, okay, no. Yep, so this is the new G and everything else. Because his resident, he doesn't. Okay, so we have to resolve that.
Yeah, that was on the one that I sent out, and.
I was the updated one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that will be the Babers public hearing set for April 22nd.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Wyatt.
Hi.
Cook. Lawson.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Reister. Uh, motion carries five, zero.
Okay, item H, discussion action to approve resolution 3205, a resolution setting public hearing regarding annexation, and this is the Fruit Nick public hearing set for April 22nd. Any discussion?
Well, Chrissy, just, oh, sorry, Chrissy, real quick, so we have two of these now, I knew of the Babers one, I didn't know we had another one.
So Fruit Nick was the second Babers one, but Babers does not own the property yet, so, so the property owner is the one that is applying for.
Ah, okay, because I knew, I knew there was two, there was two components to the Babers one, but I didn't, okay, I just assumed he owned both, but Fruit Nick's own the second half of the Babers.
There's an option, yep, there's an option on the table for him to purchase it, they just haven't completed it yet.
Awesome, thank you, that's, that clarifies it for me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call?
Uh, Sewell.
Hi.
Wyatt. Reister.
Hi.
Uh, Cook.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Motion carries five, zero.
Okay, item I, discussion action to approve resolution 3206, a resolution setting public hearing to amend the Hudson City Code 2017 by revising Chapter 171 floodplain management ordinance, and this is setting a public hearing for April 22nd.
Okay.
Discussion? We'll get more explanation of this next time I'm here, I mean, we're not making flooding.
No.
Beaters.
No, so what it is, is that FEMA finally has the updated floodplain maps. They were supposed to have them done in 2020, but they now finally have them done. So basically what this is, is that the context of the overall floodplain ordinance is not changing, it's just changing the floodplain map dates to May 8th, 2024, and the panels. But other than that, that's the only thing that's changing.
So not any of the floodplain area?
Correct. Uh, no, not the panels. So in the floodplain, with the FEMA floodplain map, panels are what is within Hudson. That's just what they call it, is the panels. Yeah, it's, they're basically the maps.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so just to be prepared, what I'm going to ask is that we just approve it at the next meeting, because it has to go back to FEMA by the 8th of, of May 8th.
Otherwise, we're not in compliance, and it would be a lot of work.
Yeah, and so.
Three readings, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna ask that, that we just approve the, the ordinance next meeting.
So I'll probably point this out at the next meeting, but the government gets to be four years late.
Yeah.
The federal government gets to be four years late, and you're right on time.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Five hundred coin and a gun.
Yes. So anyway, I just wanted to forewarn you that I'm gonna, so it'll look, it'll look different at the, the next meeting.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome.
Roll call?
Uh, Reister.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Lawson. Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Motion carries five, zero.
Okay, discussion action to approve resolution 3207, a resolution approving the transfer of funds for March 2024. 320.
It's off, isn't it? Is this off?
Yeah.
Resolution 3206. Wouldn't change that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, okay, yeah, you're fine, I got it.
If we can, if we're on the way. Okay, sorry about that, I'll. You're good. Okay, so did I have a motion?
So.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Uh, Sewell.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Reister. Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Uh, motion carries five, zero.
Okay. Item K, discussion action to improve resolution 3207, a resolution setting date for public hearing on urban renewal, plan amendment for the Hudson urban renewal area. And this is for Two Brothers Rental for property at 427 Fifth Street and property at 715 Dale.
Second.
Discussion? Take roll call?
Uh, Reister.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Uh, Cook.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Motion carries five, zero.
Item K, discussion action to approve resolution 3208, a resolution deleting property from the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area. And this is for property on Deanley Drive and Fast Lane. Why the change? Well, we can, so.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, um, the change is then to, um, do the tip, right?
Yep, so this is for tax increment financing, so we're adding, so the last motion, oh no, where we have to delete, um, these properties out of the urban renewal area, so that it has its own, so we can start the clock over. Otherwise, um, with commercial, it, it is only, it's twelve years max. And so we want to be able to start our, start a different urban renewal area, so that way we can keep adding property to it.
Well, this is not like dealing with those, uh, other housing units that are going up on the other side of the street. This is just all new section land, not yet developed?
Um, it is currently being developed, and it's on the west side of South Hudson Road. So it's on, way on the other side, where, um, like DNW for covering is at, buyer motorsports, all of that.
But the one Fast Lane is.
Of, yes, I'm sorry, but Fast Lane is.
Is up there by the commercial.
Yeah.
In that development.
Yeah.
Roll call?
Uh, Sewell, Lawson, Cook, Reister, Wyatt, motion carries five zero.
Item M, discussion, action to approve ordinance nine zero four, an ordinance deleting property from the Tax Increment Financing District for the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area of the City of Hudson, Iowa pursuant to section four zero three one nine of the Code of Iowa. And that all has to do with.
Correct.
This, yep.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call?
Uh, Lawson, Cook, Reister. Reister, Sewell, Wyatt, motion carries five zero.
Item N, discussion, action to approve resolution three two zero nine, a resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of the expanded Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area and Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. And this is for, uh, properties or for Home Dynamics and LT.
And LTK.
LTK.
And those would be the, the Dean Lee Drive and the Fast Lane businesses.
Any other discussions? Probably with, uh, her plan, there is, um, comprehensive.
Yes, it does.
And then the one is, well, both of them are brand new buildings.
Correct.
Okay, roll call?
Uh, Wyatt, Sewell, Reister, Cook, Lawson, motion carries five zero.
There are eight informational items in the packet, reminder items, regularly scheduled meetings held at council chambers, except for the library board. Uh, Public Works, um, seven AM, April tenth, in the community center, Mayor's Task Force, April sixteenth at five PM, in the community center. Personnel Admin Finance Committee, April twenty, twenty-second at four forty-five in the community center, and Public Safety Committee meeting, April twenty-fifth at four PM in the community center. Next council meetings will be Monday, April twenty-second and Monday, May thirteenth. Tentatively skip, we're gonna make it the, the thirteenth.
Yes, the thirteenth of May, tentatively.
Definitely. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor, if I'm saying aye? Opposed? All right.
Will these tables be moved before next?
I walked in and I'm going, you want to flip it so that they're waiting out?